Good evening, everybody. Town of North... Town of North Smithfield Planning Board meeting for November 18, 2021 is called to order at 7:02, right on time. First order of business is our minutes approval for the minutes from the October 14 and the October 28 meeting. If you could review the 14 first and take any comments or questions you have on those. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I skip the roll call? It's because I knew it was here. Sorry. I'll back up a minute and do the roll call. Mr. Fornier?
Yeah.
Mr. Punchak?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy? Not here. Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Keane?
Here.
Mr. Menard?
Here.
Chair is here. So one absent. It needs to be on there. I was just reading. Okay, now we'll go for the minutes approval for first, the October 14th minute. Anybody have any comments on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the October 14th meeting.
As is?
As is.
Any...
I'll second that motion.
Okay. No discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
I oppose? Nope. Fourteenth minutes are accepted as is. Same for the October 18th, October 28th meeting. Excuse me, any comments on that?
Just item number three, disclosure, no disclosures, dot, any. Just a... Oh, a typographical, number three, the last sentence, dot, any. I think that was it.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept the minutes as presented with a correction.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a second for Mr. Fornier. Those in favor?
I.
Oppose? None? October 28th minutes accepted with that correction. Okay. All right, disclosure. Is there anyone that has any potential conflicts on the matters before the planning board this evening? No? Okay. Yes?
I will recuse myself on the Harrington and Fairview Avenue. I have business...
Hampton and Fairview Avenue?
Yeah.
The se... okay.
I have business dealings with the...
Okay, thank you. Anything else for disclosure? Okay. Disclosure knows any planning board members have, should disclose any ex parte communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts and opinions concerning the merits of any application before the board this evening. Okay, hearing none? Our voting members this evening are Mr. Fornier, Mr. Punchak, Mr. Porter, Mr. Keane, and myself. Okay, all business. For discussion, consideration, and action by the board, planning pla... preliminary planning review, minor land development, RTM Realty, plat 147, lots 470. Applicant is proposing a 920 square foot indoor shooting range addition with less than the required rear yard setback to an existing 7,987 foot, uh, square foot gun and ammunition supply store in the mixed use, in a mixed use MU2 zoning district. So... And let me, let me take a moment and welcome our new planner. Mr. Speaker? Mr. Kruhl. So, are these your notes?
Uh, so Bobby and I kind of worked on this together.
Okay.
And I didn't want to alter the format as presented to this point forward.
Okay.
But it's a combination of both Bobby and I. So you can see, so we want this in the site.
Okay, anything you want to summarize on this topic?
So with regard to the items on the agenda, I'm just providing recommendations and stipulations that I'm aware of in advance of the meeting. I hope that's not too out of the ordinary to the planning board. So on the second agenda item, which is street extension.
Well, I meant just on this.
Oh, on this one, yeah, we actually have a little comment on that.
Okay.
I believe this project has already been before the board. It was approved with regard to the specials we had period requested. It would be approved of the site plan.
Right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of board. For the record, my name is Paul Carlson, Insight Engineering Services. And I just wanted to clarify one of the items, certainly before this board, that this, the addition that was proposed and was previously submitted to you was a 920 square feet. It actually is 840 square feet. I just wanted to clarify that, just to have that as a record as before the zoning board.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all in? Okay. Okay, board, we have the, we have the site plan? So we're, so we're voting on approval of the site plan now, and that's it for this meeting?
Okay. I'll make that, that motion that we approve the site plan as presented and reflect that the applicant has noted that the square footage is 840.
Second. Any discussion? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call vote. Mr. Fornier?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Keane?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. There we go. All right. Next up, new business. Okay, Mr. Menard, you're accused. For discussion, consideration, and action by the board, preliminary plan review, minor land development with a street extension, Hampton Road and Fairfa... Fairview Avenue. Plat 12, lot, lots 126. The applicant is proposing the creation of two lots, one lot with an existing dwelling and one new lot for development with the addition of cul-de-sac in a residential REA 120 zoning district. So summary on this, Mr. Kruhl?
This is a large lot that's being subdivided into two lots, basically requiring a street extension, cul-de-sac, and buy sufficient frontage for the second lot. The existing conditions in the area are very rural and do not include curbing sidewalks. The applicant is asking for a waiver, planning staff supports the waiver so that any road extension would be similar to what's existing conditions on site. We are offering several stipulations with regard to the proposal. I think we have stipulation, we probably will have an additional stipulation with regard to the existing gas line. Staff met with some neighbors in the general area last week. They were concerned about the gas line and looked into that and get checked with the company. The name of the company is Buckeye. And they do have a minimum of 25 foot setback requirement from in line with the gas line.
Okay, can you show, where is the gas line on? I don't even see it.
Oxygen gas line, it's right next to it.
Um, so it's right on the...
Yeah. Just near the easement. It runs within the national grid easement.
Within the national grid easement.
Gotcha. All right, with that, turn it over to you for presentation.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of board. Again, my name is Paul Carlson of Insight Engineering Services. And representing the applicant, Josh Bryan, for the minor subdivision, the property at 173 Hampton Street, Sessas Plat 12, Lot 126. The property has 9.02 acres of land and is split between the RU 20 and REA 120 zoning districts. As the planner had mentioned, this has frontage on both Hampton and on Fairview Avenue. Sewer electric is available within Fairview Avenue. We've also had the land verified for wetlands by NRS, and those are shown in the northeast quadrant of, of the site itself. And as was mentioned, we have the national grid easement, 200-foot easement, along with the Buckeye pipeline that runs within that 200-foot electric easement on the property. The proposal is to create two posses of land, one fronting on Fairview Avenue with the road extension, creating the cul-de-sac, giving that, that lot sufficient frontage. And also creating a scenario where we now have sufficient turnaround for emergency and vehicle access at the end of Fairview Avenue. The house will be served by sewer, electric, and, and a private well. But this preliminary plan does meet all the bylaws and regulations for, for the town. And be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Okay, turn to the board for questions, comments?
My only question is drainage of the cul-de-sac. It looks like you're taking all of the water in that cul-de-sac and put it, putting it into the street.
So as far as this particular plan, what we will end up doing is modifying up the driveway with the bio retention areas or rain gardens. We'll take the rooftop drainage, we'll have those going into underground infiltration systems. And then we'll be managing, you know, as, as the recommendation from Mark would be to, to handle the net runoff within the cul-de-sac itself.
So you've identified how you'll address the house drainage. What, I don't, what do you mean? You'll deal with the cul-de-sac within itself, like?
Well, the, the expansion of that, of the cul-de-sac, we will also have, we will have some drainage structures that would be added to this, utilizing a probably drainage easement in order to manage that runoff or the net increase that we have with the cul-de-sac.
All right, gotcha. Is, is there any other modification besides splitting the properties? Is there any other change to the property line? I see a...
No, no, it's just, it's just that single, single line. There are no other modifications that are required.
This one, so now it'll end up going around the cul-de-sac? Yeah, it's okay, so, so yeah, the other change is that the property, the property line will now go around?
Around the cul-de-sac, I'm sorry, yes.
All right. I'd just say for future drawings, if you get to see the, the proposed new property line.
We do indicate that in the cul-de-sac detail. It does indicate the old, old property line and then, and what we are showing from right away. But we'll clarify that a little bit further.
Okay.
So I, I have two questions, and this is probably more for, for Mark and Bobby. I know this, this new proposed house is going to tie into the existing sewer. Is the, does the sewer still have capacity to bring on an additional building?
So we, we did check with the sewer authority. And they said there was sewer available.
Okay.
There is sufficient capacity.
All right, great. And then the other question, I was trying to figure out where the nearest fire hydrant or cistern were, was. And I didn't know if the fire department had, had any comment on that.
Uh, the fire department did weigh in on that. They would prefer that there was a cistern on that street somewhere, but that's not something they can require.
Right.
I don't know where the hydrant is, but...
So there's currently no cistern on Fairview Ave?
No.
Okay.
There's a hydrant at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
But that's gone.
On Greenville Road.
Yeah, okay.
That's the closest one.
Right, yeah, where, where they, where they meet. This is how far, this is how far from Greenville Road?
From Greenville Road, quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
That's that far, yeah.
Okay.
Close enough for them to, to use a tanker shuttle if they, if they had to.
Yeah, although their, their preference is they have the cistern, what, in the cul-de-sac or somewhere there.
With multiple houses, I would agree, but for, for a single one.
Well...
For a single dwelling, I wouldn't impose that on them.
Sure. And then I guess my, my only other comment would be, as far as, as lighting goes, it looks like there's some street lighting along the way. If there would, could be one that's just added into the cul-de-sac for safety, people can see where they're going. I think that might be one thing to, to take a look at.
I, I would agree to a waiver of the sidewalks and curbs.
Well, I wanted to ask a question, but maybe it's only to clarify the language. It says, extension of existing streets with outside, and the elimination of granite curbing. There's, is, is that almost like, is there existing granite?
No.
Curbing now? So this is, this is really to say not to, is to, is to waive the necessity for it?
That's correct. So, so as the application came in, you know, it came in as a fairly basic application. And when we took it through the developments review regulations for requirements, there's, there is no granite curbing presented as part of the application nor as our sidewalks, it's required on site. So we're, we're suggesting that a waiver be issued.
Right. Because we're only talking about the...
So they're not required to install it.
Because the only place we're talking about is the cul-de-sac itself.
Oh, yeah, so we, we require...
Yeah, it always, it would look more like a border on their yard than it would any else. Yeah, it'd be kind of strange. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Would, would the berm be installed with the asphalt? Would you do that?
We, we'd be working with that as far as the drainage and, because we have to manage that within a certain area, more likely than not than we would have that.
Is that how the rest of Fairview Ave is done?
Um, probably not. I don't think so. I think it's just surface floor.
Right now it just runs into their yards?
In their yards and down the street.
Yeah, okay.
That was, that was the first road built in that, in that area off of Greenville Road, so...
Yeah, I, I lived there when I was a little kid.
So the road becomes the property of the town when it's done?
Yes.
So it's built to the town specs?
I, I just want to go back. I, I feel a little uncomfortable on the, on taking the, and we haven't seen the official wording, but I'm taking, overriding the fact that the police, you know, if the fire chief says he'd prefer to see it, granted, it's a preference, it's not a requirement. But I think I, I think I wouldn't want to dismiss that. I feel uncomfortable, the planning board dismissing it. I think what I'd rather see is maybe something written from the fire chief that says, you know, in lieu of that, maybe here's, here's your option, and, or we'll be able to do this. I would just like to see something official that the fire chief puts out saying that he's okay with that.
We, I would suggest that the board add a stipulation that the fire chief review and approve or authorize prior to final approval, so that we have a letter and file.
Yeah, as long as we have something, yeah, because it's not for us, it's not for us to override them. Yeah.
In, in the regulations, the condition for requiring a cistern is three single family homes. So if this development was cul-de-sac of three homes, we'd certainly stipulate.
Right, right. Yeah, on the other hand, now they're, there's probably, there's probably houses that are already there that are stretching it a little bit, you know, so it's, you know, let's see what he, let's see what he says. And we'll go with that. Okay.
There's also a system up the street a little bit on the other side of Hampton Road.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that may, that may come into his thinking. All right. Uh, let's see, you mentioned the lighting. Did that result, did either of your things result in any stipulations?
Uh, no, because I asked about the sewer, I asked about the fire.
That's all right, and we already had a, yeah, we got a 40-foot radius of that.
Light at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Mm-hmm.
David already talked, talked about runoff. Those were my notes.
Okay.
There was one over there, which is handed to us to the...
That was for the gas pipeline?
Yeah.
I would just ask to show the setbacks of the house, the property lines. Okay, any other questions or comments?
This maybe for the planner and Bobby. Number three in the stipulations, that prior to final approval, the applicant shall provide either a letter indicating the intent to complete the required public improvements. Wouldn't we just want a security instead of a letter? I can give you a letter and say, I'm going to do it and not do it.
Standard to regulation is either or. So at the end of the day, if they choose not to bond it, you know, that can be the priority of the board. If you require them to bond it, there was no provision for bonding anything that was provided to us, just, just so that we're aware. We would not, and the town would not, grant the final approval and report that subdivision until the cul-de-sac was installed, inspected, and ready to be accepted. So that's the provision that they would bid. If, if the board prefers that bonded, we will have the bond calculated, and they shall submit a bond.
So being a resident of a unfinished road, I would definitely push for the bond as opposed to just a letter.
Yeah, and that's, that's consistent with most of our projects. I mean, we've, right? We're usually...
Yeah, we've done bonds.
Yeah, we've done bonds.
We're still waiting for a few other ones.
Yeah, in some cases, we're still waiting on them, yes. So... Okay? That was, that was, probably was not a big surprise.
No. I'm familiar.
Yeah.
One other question. That remaining wooded area, the triangle, piece of, triangular piece, the 580, speed of frontage on this, I'm, I'm, I believe it's on... What's that? I'm sorry. Give me one, please.
Okay.
There's only two pieces, there's not going to be...
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I would just, on the other side of the easement, there's that triangular piece. I was just wondering how much, how much that acreage is, that's all.
Which area are you asking about?
He's asking.
Yeah, this triangle.
Oh, that.
It's very much, because the two easements come, come together.
Right, I was going to say, but you're actually looking at the entire...
Looks like it's no man's land, but...
Gotcha.
Yeah.
This is another 250-foot electric easement. Going off to the north.
Right.
Does that extend down into this, this property, this, this second?
Are you, you talking about this triangle piece here?
Yeah, so that, north of that, there's a, there's a...
There's another 250, yeah, because as everybody knows, the, you know, the transfer station is, is basically right next to the area here. So we, we have two, two areas that have been joining through.
Oh, right. What's our action on this? Are we voting on this?
Yeah, we are. Yes, this is for a, for an area.
Okay, so...
Chairman, just before that, if I may.
Sure.
Stipulation number three, so I crossed out that portion, and it will now be, if the board approves, final approval, prior to final approval, the applicant shall provide security sufficient to cover the cost of the required improvements as established by the planning board or its designated. The designated would be the town's engineering consultant to do a calculation as to the cost of infrastructure.
Probably of unapproval. Oh, right, so you eliminated the part about the, the letter and just, okay, I got it. Yep.
Provide security for that.
Okay. Okay. Anything else before we move to a voter? Mr. Porter, you, you look like you're...
No, I'm just wondering, should we just? We have the, the four conditions. Do we just need to add the, the fifth for the letter from the fire chief?
And the gas line?
This is the fifth, this is the fifth condition.
Yes.
Sorry, number six.
Right.
The letter from the fire chief.
Could you have, could you give me a minute?
Oh, sorry.
Add number six, the letter from the fire chief. Number seven, constructing the cul-de-sac to...
Number seven, constructing the cul-de-sac to DOT standards, and then the light at the end of the cul-de-sac would be the additional, uh, items.
Would number seven be DOT or town standards?
I think DOT is the town standard.
Yeah, but who does the approval? The town?
The power, DPW.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be DPW. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Punchak.
Uh, so I will make a motion to approve, um, the minor subdivision with the seven stipulations that we've discussed.
Yep.
The four in the planner's report with the revision to number three, um, no letter, just the bond, uh, five being the requirements of the, um, Buckeye Gas Company, six being the letter from the fire department, and seven being, um, cul-de-sac construction in conformance with DPW requirements.
In which case there are eight, it's also the light at the end of it.
Oh, the light at the end.
Of the tunnel, yes.
Yes. So the eight stipulations that I just laid out.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
So we have a second, we have a second for Mr. Fornier? Okay, roll call, vote, Mr. Fornier?
Yes.
Mr. Punchak?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
And Mr. Keane?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great, so, you have the honor of presenting the first new project in the Mark Corillo era of North Smithfield Planning.
All right.
Remember this day.
You're, you're going to be the, you're going to be the answer to a trivia question.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Before I do?
Oh.
I'm going to back you up.
Okay, I rescind.
My goodness. Do you have money on tonight's game or what? No, I, I was remiss at doing this at the beginning, but I do want to formally and on the record welcome Mark Corillo as our new planner. So, Mark, thank you. On behalf of the board, I, I want to say we're all very much looking forward to, to working with you, I think we speak for Bobby as well, and, um, we, we have a lot of confidence in you, we think it was a great selection for North Smithfield. So, thank you. Now with that...
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none?